So, welcome to a special city council meeting Wednesday, the twenty eighth. It's five thirty P M. And we are ready to go for the roll call. Councilman Meacham is going to be late, and that may be him slamming the door that I can hear behind me. Maybe not. It's Mike Romero making a case. So, as soon as Lynn gets here, we'll have a full, full council. We do have a full forum, so we're ready to go. Pledge of allegiance. I would like to ask if someone would lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
I will.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask if someone would give us an invocation or an inspirational thought? Anyone?
I'll do that, Mayor, if you want me to.
Okay, Norm.
Our dear, kind Father in heaven, we grateful for this opportunity that we have to come before the council at this time and for the decisions that will be made this night. We ask thy spirit will be with us, bless our families as we are away from them, that they may be safe. And bless us to, bless the council and mayor to, to make good decisions that will benefit our residents and our community. We're grateful for the opportunity to serve, and we acknowledge thy hand in all things. And we say this in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. We'll just jump right into it. We have need to enter a formal public hearing for the Santaquin City Fiscal Year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. It's the budget amendment number two. I need a motion to proceed to that formal hearing.
So moved.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway.
Aye.
Councilman Adcock.
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
Good to go. This is five thirty-three. So, we're gonna open it up. Do any members of the public wish to address the city council in this public hearing? And anybody that's late at this point?
I thought we had it open, but we're gonna check on it.
So, seeing no wish by anyone to address in this public hearing, we can now end the public hearing for the, for the fiscal year budget twenty-two, twenty-three amendment two.
You look for a motion?
Yeah.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Lynn?
Oh, yeah.
Counselor Montoya?
Aye.
Counselor Adcock?
Aye.
Counselor Sitaway?
Aye.
Counselor Meacham?
Aye.
Counselor Hathaway?
Aye.
Five thirty-five. We have need to pass the resolution approving the budget amendment number two for the Santaquin City Fiscal Year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, which is called Amendment Two. This is the second time we'll have opened the budget. This is a, a document that we've lived on through the year, made them cuts and cuts and cuts by saying no, no, no. And we're at the point that we're ready to move forward. We had all those numbers to look at and evaluate in our homes over the last day or two. I hope you had, all had time to look at them. I had a couple of questions that I sent through to Norm, but I'm pretty good with. Just before we jump in and do an announcement, first off, or a request, are there any questions? Do you understand where we've been able to move those monies around and make the ends meet with this? The one thing I wasn't really sure on was the amount of money that we had to dip into the, the rainy day funds. It's, it's kinda lumped in a bunch of different ways, and I got started trying to cross-do those. Could you hit it, or Shannon?
If, if I may, Mayor, I'll just hit some highlights on there, and we'll be able to move forward. So you may remember, I think that what the mayor is focusing on is ten thirty-nine, one hundred, this number right here. You may remember that in, in March, when we did a budget amendment number one, we estimated that we would need to pull out six hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars out of rainy day funds. We have now actually received some more revenue from property taxes, a little bit of interest revenue, a little bit of sales taxes increased more than what we had thought during that, or anticipated during that budget amendment number one. And so that, that number is actually coming down. That number is actually going to be, if this passes, you would be authorizing, excuse me, four hundred and fifty-four thousand, so two hundred and ten thousand dollars less than what we had anticipated before, because we've been able to bring in some extra revenues. And again, it's any, anything from, for instance, we had both, both Murdoch and the McDonald's building permits come in, which makes up a significant amount more than, you know, one of those is probably more like five to ten homes, and the other one's probably two to four homes. And so, we anticipated that. We have had a few more homes that have come in, but we also have, have experienced just getting more property tax in. Now, that property tax is still below what the, the amount was that we were estimated to get. And that's not unusual, because it's still, I wanna say it's probably, I don't know, forty thousand dollars lower than what they estimated. And that's not unusual, but you typically have delinquents, and that's why we have in the budget a last year's item that we get from past due property taxes. So, that's that. And then also, to go along with that, we have had to make a couple of purchases that we have been holding off on, but we also had the revenue be able to come in for those. We ended up getting a street mower and a ball field groomer that have been on the budget list for three years now. And we've said, no, 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 we can't buy it. Well, those two pieces of equipment literally just died on us about a month ago, a month and a half ago, within the mayor's spending authority. So we've gone ahead and used those, some of those additional funds as well to go ahead and purchase those. And I think that they've come in, or they will be coming in. They got here today. Good. So we'll be actually be able to use those for the summer and for the ball season. So that's really, really good. So that's kind of in a nutshell where we're gonna be at. But I believe what the mayor was referring to is this number right here, which is good. Again, we don't have to dip as far into the rainy day fund, because we've had additional revenue come in. So, I, does that answer your question? Do you have any other?
There seems to be a sinusoidal wave, wave with those incoming funds, that I don't know if sustainability will retain there.
That's correct.
However, there's a little bit that we can look at, because, well.
That's correct.
A lot of reasons, I guess.
But that is correct. They're, they're intermittent and not direct across the board every month, from everything from building permits to sales taxes to franchise fees. All of those fluctuate. Like, like, we got a little bit of some of the revenue that came in was actually from franchise fees, because we had a longer, colder winter. Well, if we have a colder, a warmer, drier winter next year, that could be the opposite direction, but it just happens to be where we're at. But you're right, it does, it does fluctuate. And so, Shannon, again, to her credit, has put in hours and hours and hours to get us where we need to be, and, and this is where we're at on that, so.
Two, two of the biggest hits that we took through the year were the pump motors that went out. Dead heat of the summer, and one we knew that was being rebuilt, but didn't have it yet. And the other one, we didn't even have a replacement. Not, and, and you see those costs in here. We had that well down for maybe a day and a half, day. We were able to move things around with Skater system and the help of the crews. The watering kinda took, the outside watering kinda took a little bit of a hit on Summit Ridge. But I'm not sure most everybody noticed, noticed it. And, and yet, all the culinary, all the time, all the fire service, all those specs were hit. And then we had it replaced. And it was a pretty cool ballet of engineering, public works, and the crew out of Willard that are capable of moving pumps around and helping us find a pump and getting that in. And that, we spent a lot of money on that.
Yeah, and again, that.
And we're good.
Kudos to former councils that planned for that, because we have that repair and replacement set aside. So that didn't actually even come from the general fund. It came from the reserve, from the repair and replacement side of things, that we know pumps and motors are gonna go bad. We know things are gonna fail and that kinda thing. And kudos to former councilmembers, councils that have set that aside and helped us to be able to have that particular rainy day fund that is dedicated specifically for repair and replacement of those types of, of issues.
Norm, do you happen to know how much percentage of our thirty-five percent still exists?
It's, it's thirty-five percent minus this. So let me do some really quick math, and I can tell you what that would be. So... This will use up instead of the eighteen percent that we anticipated before, this is about twelve and a half percent. So we would still have, what, eighty-seven percent of our, of our reserves would still be available to us in coming years. So, again, fortunate for us to not have to dip into it as far as, as what we had anticipated even just three months ago.
I, I think a couple of, of good windfalls that we didn't know when they were going to happen with those businesses coming up and, and ready to go, but.
Right. And we don't have another Murdoch or another McDonald's coming next year. We, we could. But right now, there's, there's probably more small businesses coming in than, than those bigger ones.
So there were some issues that I think we answered, but I believe we've got it with all the no's that we had to face up to through this year in the budget. I was pleased when we got to this point, going, we made this, we made it with the cuts that we made, and thank you. I think we have made the right decisions through the year, and I appreciate that. So, with that in mind, we have need to pass that resolution, oh-six, oh-five, twenty-twenty-three, the budget approval of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three year-end closeout, really. This gets us in line with state regulations. This is Amendment Number Two. So, I would like a motion to pass.
So moved.
So moved by Council, Councilman Sitaway, second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Dave Hathaway. Counselor Montoya?
Aye.
Counselor Adcock?
Aye.
Counselor Sitaway?
Aye.
Counselor Meacham?
Aye.
Counselor Hathaway?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have a need to convene the meeting to... Don't we need to go back into the regular meeting?
We already are in the regular meeting. We need to go into the C D R A now.
We need to convene the meeting into the Santaquin City C D R A, so that we can do the budget for the community development block grant that, or...
Renewal agency.
Renewal agency, yeah. Block grants tomorrow. Remember that, Jason. Okay. Could I have a motion to go into the C D R A?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Counselor Montoya?
Aye.
Counselor Adcock?
Aye.
Counselor Sitaway?
Aye.
Counselor Meacham?
Aye.
Counselor Hathaway?
Aye.
Five forty-five.
So Mayor, in this meeting, we're just approving the expenditures for this year. There is no budget amendment, because we're within budget. There's no additional or less transfers, and we haven't gone over anywhere on, on expenditure. So this is just approving the expenditures for the, the end of the budget year, and they're listed there. This is, for the public's information, this is a sub-entity of the city where we focus on economic development. And this is just a, a, kind of a, of a closeout item for the, the year end as far as the fiscal year end is concerned. And again, there is no budget amendment, because the budget that we approved originally stands.
And just to add one more thing, the C D R A is, is the mechanism by which the city can form this agency and still have control of city-owned property. Through that C D R A, the laws of the state of Utah allows Santaquin to act in the C D R A and to buy or sell water rights, or in this case, properties. We have industrial property, sixty-six acres, which we're only gonna use a portion of with this. But we talked about that for a minute earlier. However, there are monies that were put out. We are the developers, and we are taking care of this thing coming together. We have businesses that have not only signed up, they've bought the property. We've got the infrastructure going through. All of this is being handled by their attorneys and our attorneys, just so you know what's going on.
And the majority, all of these expenditures, the majority of them are the infrastructure, the pipe, the legal aspect of the contract reviews, the work done by Zion's Bank and others. So this is, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, but that's essentially the, the action here, is just to approve these expenditures.
For those of you that are in Santaquin University, we'll go through some more of that in detail as we go through this process of learning, so that you don't get sidelined by how this actually takes place. We need to, at this time, as a board, and board members, approve the expenditures that were reviewed and are online posted. Are there any questions? Do you have anything along those lines? The only two that I saw in there that I had any question on, there, there was two thousand and some odd dollars in change on one line, and the next line down was two thousand. It's, it's actually attorney fees to make sure the papers are drawn up, and we're doing absolutely everything.
Attorney and banking's cost, yeah.
And it's all out there. There's nothing hidden. It's not us dealing with ground and getting money in our pockets. You don't get a thing. There's nothing. All you do is work, okay? That's what we do. You will notice in there, there was eight thousand dollars or so that went back into the city for the staff time that was used to help put together some things in there. So, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the expenditures for the C D R A.
So moved.
By Board Member Meacham, second?
I'll second.
By Board Member Sitaway, Board Member Montoya.
Aye.
Just as you take a drink, perfect time.
Board Member Adcock?
Aye.
I'm reading all those. I, I'm not looking up that much. Board Member Sitaway?
Aye.
Board Member Meacham?
Aye.
Board Member Hathaway?
Aye.
Thank you. We have need to end the C D R A and go into the regular city council meeting. I need a motion to get out of the C D R A.
So moved.
Moved by Count, by Board Member Meacham, second?
I'll second.
By Board Member Hathaway, Board Member Montoya?
Aye.
Board Member Adcock?
Aye.
Board Member Sitaway?
Aye.
Board Member Meacham?
Aye.
Board Member Hathaway?
Aye.
Six fifty, five fifty, sorry. Regular city council, or council meeting is ready to go. Okay. We have need to enter into the Santaquin City Local Building Authority Meeting. Motion, motion by Counselor to enter into that meeting.
So moved.
Boy, you are on fire tonight. You know that?
He's got a meeting right up his ass, Mayor.
I'm glad you showed up, Lynn. Second?
I'll second.
By Dave? Counselor Montoya?
Aye.
Counselor Adcock?
Aye.
Counselor Sitaway?
Aye.
Counselor Meacham?
Aye.
Counselor Hathaway?
Aye.
Five fifty-one. Okay, we have a need to enter into the formal public hearing for the Santaquin City Local Building Authority, so that we can look at the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, the only amendment to their budget. I would entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
Okay.
I gave you a chance. I went for it.
Board Member Montoya?
Aye.
Board Member Adcock?
Aye.
Board Member Sitaway?
Aye.
Board Member Meacham?
Aye.
Board Member Hathaway?
Aye.
Five fifty-two. Hey, I'm getting all these for you.
You too.
We can meet sometime and make sure we got them. Do any members of the public wish to address the Santaquin City Local Building Authority in this public meeting? We can now hold a public hearing? I'm not sure that we have to go to... Yeah, we do. We're in the public hearing. Any comments or questions, or we good to go? Okay, then we can now end the public hearing. Need a, a motion to do so?
So moved.
I think I'll just write you on all of these seconds. At art? You don't wanna second it. Dang.
I'll second.
Board Member Montoya?
Aye.
Board Member Ha- Adcock?
Aye.
Board Member Sitaway?
Aye.
Board Member Meacham?
Aye.
Board Member Hathaway?
Aye.
It's five fifty-three. We have a need to pass a resolution, oh-six, oh-one, twenty-twenty-three, L B A approving budget amendment number one for the Santaquin City Local Building Authority. Are there, before we do, are there any questions, any concerns with that? We feel like we've got things covered. This is something that was set up, good to go with. Seeing no questions, I need a motion to pass the resolution, oh-six, oh-one, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
Was that you, Jeff?
It was.
Second?
I'll second.
Board Member Montoya?
Aye.
Board Member Adcock?
Aye.
Board Member Sitaway?
Aye.
Board Member Meacham?
Aye.
Board Member Hathaway?
Aye.
We have need to approve the expenditures for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three City Local Building Authority. Twenty-two, twenty-three. Okay, let's go through those expenditures. Are there any questions? You wanna bring that up?
I've got it there, Board Members and Chair. This is, again, just a, a formality to approve the expenditures for this. This is where, because of funding constraints and those types of things in the state of Utah, when we built the Public Works Building down on the north end of town, that was done through the local building authority rather than through the city, because it was, it was more favorable for the financing terms. And so this is just basically, we, we had some additional debt service that we have to pay twelve hundred and some odd dollars, but that's included in here, and that, that you've already approved on the, on the budget amendment. So this is just approval of the expenditures for the L B A, which is just essentially the, the debt service and some other small fees that go along with that. Happy to answer any questions that you have with that?
All that for twelve hundred dollars, so we're getting down to the good parts. Are there any questions? You comfortable with that? I know we've talked about this a few times. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the expenditures for the fiscal year.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Board Member Montoya?
Aye.
Board Member Adcock?
Aye.
Board Member Sitaway?
Aye.
Board Member Meacham?
Aye.
Board Member Hathaway?
Aye.
We have a need to end the Santaquin City Local Building Authority Meeting and re-enter into the Santaquin City Council Meeting. So I have a motion. Lynn? Second?
I'll second.
Board Member Hathaway?
Aye.
Board Member Meacham?
Aye.
Board Member Sitaway?
Aye.
Board Member Adcock?
Aye.
Board Member Montoya? Fooled you, didn't I? Regular city council is at five fifty-six. We have a need to enter into the city, Santaquin City Special Service District Meeting. Motion by...
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Counselor Montoya?
Aye.
Counselor Adcock?
Aye.
Counselor Sitaway?
Aye.
Counselor Meacham?
Aye.
Counselor Hathaway?
Aye.
Five fifty-seven. We need to approve the expenditures for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three Special Service District.
So Mayor, or sorry, Chair and, and Board Members, the, this is again...
This is council.
Are we in the council, or are we in the board meeting? We're in the board meeting.
Oh, we are, sorry.
So this is the...
Sorry, I'm one minute off.
This is the other subentity that we have, that has holdings for the city. Basically, it, it allows us to, to be able to buy and sell or move water shares. And this, this is the, these are the assessments for the two companies that we pay water shares out of through this particular entity and a small charge for the annual registration of the state. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have with that.
I, I misspoke when I said we go through the C D R A. This is the way in which we do that. And you saw in there, that was Jordan, Jordan Water District, as well as Summit Creek Shares, somewhere around forty-three, forty-four thousand total. Okay? Is there any questions? Then as a board, I need a motion to approve those expenditures, as noted.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Board Member Montoya?
Aye.
Board Member Adcock?
Aye.
Board Member Sitaway?
Aye.
Board Member Meacham?
Aye.
Board Member Hathaway?
Aye.
That passes. We have need to enter into the Santaquin Special Service District Meeting and, or to end the Santaquin Special Service District Meeting and re-enter the regular city council. Can I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
I'll second.
Board Member Montoya?
Aye.
Board Member Adcock?
Aye.
Board Member Sitaway?
Aye.
Board Member Meacham?
Aye.
Board Member Hathaway?
Aye.
Five fifty-eight. Five fifty-eight. We're in regular city council meeting again. Are there any questions or anything else that came up? I'm going to end this in just one minute. However, before I ask for the adjourn, I, I just want to tell you, I, I spent a little while on the phone with Luke Decker, the Ranger. The bids were open. The amount of money was significantly higher than they anticipated again. And they have enough to take care of a big portion of it, but they also think they've got the whole thing. They want another week to get things, the documents all signed. So we were hoping it was gonna be open by today, or awarded by today. I, I've been shared some pretty cool information. They are working feverishly to get it. I've got information into Burgess Owen's office, trying to get an audience with him and see that we can push things forward. However, looks like we're gonna be underway. I asked him why we didn't have the canyon opened at least to Trumbull. And it was turned over to the county, and the county is still trying to get through some of their efforts with the flood mitigation. And Sam is, is the one that's been charged with getting it done. So we may hear that that gets open any day. He was supposed to be on the phone with him this afternoon, so I'll keep you updated as soon as I find something else out. So it looks like Canyon's gonna be underway work-wise. Any other things we need to bring up? There's a meeting that starts in minus one minute.
I heard in passing this evening, something about a block grant meeting tomorrow. What's that about?
It's actually for the secondary metering grants that we're gonna be going for the state of Utah. We've got staff that will be attending that up in Salt Lake tomorrow.
That's the one where they've preliminarily given us two million dollars to get on that. And we're gonna go up and make sure that somebody crosses the T's before we dot their I's.
Yeah, so it's one point six seven million, and it, and it should be official tomorrow or some point thereafter.
Yeah, that's what we're hoping. That's a real good move. That puts some good money into the P I system and brings a lot of old meters up to date, so. Okay. I'd like to adjourn. There's regular city council meeting. I need a motion.
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
Counselor Montoya?
Aye.
Counselor Matt Adcock?
Aye.
Counselor Sitaway?
Aye.
Counselor Meacham?
Aye.
Counselor Hathaway?
Aye.
Six oh-two. Thank you. Special meeting in.